Alice Norris, the mayor.
Doug Neely, what am I, commission president?
Rocky Smith, commissioner.
And around the table we have.
Denise Kai, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director.
My Conrad Police Department.
Nancy I, City Recorder.
David Fraser, City Manager.
Terry Bankhead, Assistant City Manager.
Nancy Kraushaar, Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Tony Conkle, Community Development Director.
Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is to see if anyone has any items for future agendas to add to the table.
No, Nancy Kraushaar, I wanted to find out if there's something that she could introduce and maybe give her a chance to see if it's okay for tonight. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, yeah. It really came up just like an hour ago.
That wouldn't be future, that would be like.
Yeah, yeah, but.
It's mostly just a little discussion about it and then I think that the project team can make the decision, just to kind of bounce around some ideas.
Okay.
It has to do with the jug handle and it's really time critical.
All right.
It has to do with the floodplain mitigation area in case, I mean, it's using property owned by the city.
Any objections to adding that to the agenda for the evening? Okay, no, of course not. If there's something important, we need to do it. Seeing none, yep, nothing else, then we'll move on to the discussion of the TriMet officer.
I just want to let you know, at the end, I'm going to make a request for something before the commission, the next commission. So that'll be at the end of our sitting session.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'd like to also introduce with me tonight Commander Vince Jarmer, who's with the Portland Police Bureau. He's in charge of the Police Transit Division at the Police Bureau. And as an interesting side note, Vince actually worked for Oregon City Police Department, leaving in 1984, and his former coach was Rocky's.
But not this one.
Not this one.
You see a similarity though, I presume?
I do. In fact, I do.
Yeah, I think he's having flashbacks. They might not be good ones either. The reason for appearing before the commission tonight is to ask permission to hire a officer to work with TriMet. And some of the benefits of this are it really helps us in patrolling and policing our own transit stations and our TriMet bus stops here in town. It brings additional resources since we're in a regional partnership. Most municipalities in the Portland area do partner with TriMet. With the advent of the Green Line terminating at the Town Center, that has brought an influx of criminal activity, similar to other activity that has occurred when the lines terminated in Hillsborough and Beaverton. And as we anticipate that line eventually moving in towards Milwaukee and into Oregon City, I think it's a good idea to have a partnership already in place with TriMet working this. The benefits are, in addition to that, this is a position that is paid for entirely by TriMet. They pay for all the cost, salary, benefits, overtime, and in addition to that, they pay a 5% administrative cost to the agency that covers administrative cost.
What are the downsides?
I see none to tell you the truth, Mayor. I think it's a great, it's a great position for us and the city. And I think maybe Commander Jarmer might want to talk to you a little bit more about some of the benefits that you might see if we do enter into this agreement with TriMet.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here, back here, I should say, after a 26-year absence. When I first started, we had 29 officers. We're now at 58 sworn officers, which makes it a lot easier to police nearly 600 square miles of transit service district, which, as you probably know, terminates here in Oregon City to the south. But we go all the way from Hillsborough to Gresham and from Oregon City to the city, a limit line at Portland City Limits. I see this as, and the chief and I have discussed this before, what I consider this developing or burgeoning issue is regional police work. Even in the city of Portland, where I've been very fortunate to work for the last several years, we can't do it all ourselves anymore, and we need to have partnerships and connections with our outside agency partners. When and if Oregon City decides to become a part, a portion of the transit police, that'll be the 16th agency of roughly 20 in the Metropolitan Service District that are partners in this. And the networking and the ability to call somebody up and the ability to move resources within the tri-county area to address issues is, is something that individual agencies, even county agencies, have difficulty with in the logistics. So I see this as kind of the future of police work, a regional approach to things, and I think it just is a huge benefit for the officer. It gives the chief a chance to develop his workforce in a way that may not have been an opportunity before. And I think the citizens of Oregon City even receive the benefit of trained and skilled officers when they come back, because we do have a rotational policy, to develop, further develop the workforce, put somebody else into that position to do some of the work and have some of the experiences and kind of enhance their career, if you will.
Great, that's the report. Are there any questions?
I do have a couple.
Commissioner Neely?
My understanding is we're being paid to have that position, but from what I heard you say, well, we might be able to rotate officers into that to gain additional experience. Is I understanding you correctly?
Yes, sir. The idea is that we ask the chief of police to allow us to have an officer for three years. And once the three years is up, then we put, rotate that person back to the agency from where he or she came, and then ask for that position to be filled by another officer from that agency.
And do we, in the process, hire an additional officer?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And that's what I, that's what I understood. I would say that I was on the Max Line once where having metro officers on the, on the line at that particular point resulted in somebody not getting beat up by somebody else. And that was really positive. And also the fact we have a lot of our county correctional facilities, I think, including our probation officers right there on Main Street, is probably quite a benefit.
You know, the last time I put on a uniform and went out and rode around, which wasn't that long ago, I was actually called down to the Transit Center by county probation on a domestic disturbance that had happened down there. And there's quite a few of those, surprisingly, that happen, drug dealing, gang activity. So there's a lot of stuff that goes on down there. And as you know, this is the county seat, and people use mass transit to get to probation, to get to community corrections, to get to the jail. And we get a lot of characters coming through town on the system, and it would benefit the city to have an officer assigned to TriMet. So we could address those if it comes even more of an issue.
Now, this comes before the commission?
Yes. It's a resolution.
If it's, if it's agreed to tonight, then we add the consent agenda for next, for the May 19th, regularly, the city commission.
Okay, and the only downside of that would be that we have two people missing. So if I could, I will suggest that you do put on the consent agenda if you're able to talk to our two missing commissioners, make sure they're up to speed on, because otherwise they may have questions. And we, on the consent agenda, there can't be questions, so why not give them a conversation?
I can, if that's fine with Mr. Fraser, we'll talk to them individually and.
It's, but it's not really that much of an issue. We just pulled off the consent and brought on separately, and we had that discussion.
Yeah, right. Save us step probably.
Yeah.
Either way.
I think it might be more informative to the public, having it as a regular commission meeting, so I don't think.
You mean on a regular discussion agenda?
Right.
Certainly do that if that's.
I think the benefit of that is that because we're televised twice, that it does give the public a more of an understanding of an agenda, of an important issue like this, so.
I'm sure Commander Jarmer would love to come back and speak before the whole commission.
I don't know that he has to do that. I'm sure you could carry the water for him.
I'd be happy to come back, Mayor.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much.
You miss Oregon City a lot, don't you? This is a real opportunity.
I love this one, yeah.
Great, we're glad you're here. Thank you for coming out. Next, we have another, the next discussion item is to talk about the elevator and a proposal from businesses on downtown for an extension of hours for the elevator. So Nancy Kraushaar, is that your suggestion?
Yes, it is indeed. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners, good evening. Over probably the past 12 months, even when we were doing the parking study meetings, the question arose quite frequently, gee, couldn't we have the elevator hours extended later, especially on the weekends, Friday and Saturday nights? And we've actually done it a few times for the Antique Fair and this and that. But there's, there seems to be a lot more demand for a connection between the McLaughlin area and the block, the promenade, and the downtown on Friday and Saturday nights, because there's more activity down there, so, or different types of activities, and drawing in more from the neighborhoods, I think, and needing the parking up in the bluff area too. So we decided to get more information about that, and then most recently with the farmer's market being planned for Wednesday afternoons downtown from, I believe it's from 3:00 to 7:00, or 2:00 to 7:00, something. There was also a request, gosh, we could really use that elevator to facilitate visitors coming to the farmer's market, not necessarily the vendors, because the vendors have to park for more than two hours and they have to be at the market the entire time. But certainly for people shopping at the farmer's market, if they can park up above and lock down, it would be fabulous. So again, it was like, well, can we get an extra hour? We don't need it for more than an extra hour. So we contacted our, to me, the most important thing was, well, yes, except how are we going to fund it? And it sounds like a great idea, but we've been in our elevator hours forever, and we have a contract, and there's a funding question, because the, right now, the elevator is funded two-thirds by the general fund and one-third by the street fund. And the street fund pretty much covers the maintenance and sort of the management parts of the elevator, which is part of our transportation system. And then the actual operation is picked up a little bit by the street fund, but primarily, I would like to say that that is covered by the general fund, and, which is prob, it's the most appropriate use of the gas fund to be looking at more the maintenance and management issues for the elevator. The, we contacted the, our contractor for the elevator, and they said they'd be happy to provide extra hours. They would honor the rate, which is $19.06 per hour of our existing contract. That contract has been until January 2012, and it doesn't escalate each year. They applied an escalation factor at the beginning of the contract. I believe it was a three-year contract. And so that would mean that if we had it open for an extra three hours on Friday and Saturday nights, every weekend of the 52-week year, it'd be about $6,000 more per year. And to do the farmer's market, just that one extra hour for six months, one day a week, it's about $500 per year. So you're looking at a total budget increase of maybe $6,500 to provide those extra services.
The request is for the, an annual Friday, Saturday, for the whole year?
That's what I understand.
Not just for special events?
That's what I understand. We could, there's, there are folks here that could talk about it.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a need for that. So I would like to hear about that.
The basic questions we're discussing is probably a question.
The question, you're out of order.
Can we invite, can we invite members of the Main Street group to come up here and make presentations?
If you would like to talk to us about, the question is the Saturday, Friday and Saturday for the year, rather than just for the high season, why that would be necessary?
And maybe I have misinterpreted that. I just kind of assumed that we were busier downtown, but we can do whatever people want us to do, as long as we have the money, as long as you can find the money.
And rainy, yeah.
Yeah.
My first blush would be to.
That was made through October in your report, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that the warm weather months where people are going to be, you know, out and willing to make that walk. And I would try to tailor it to, you know, Friday and Saturday nights, I look at like, Wednesdays, we're going to get this draw downtown, so maybe you'd want to, you'd hope that those people then would go to some of those businesses, eat, you know, have a cocktail or do something, and then go home. So I would maybe recommend looking at, if we're going to experiment with a midweek, Wednesday is a great one, because of farmer's market, but let's maybe go till, you know, 9:00 or 10:00 or something like that, to where they can actually go to the market and experience downtown and then go home. Because that's still pretty short, if the market ends at 7:00.
Yeah, the market's requested just a one-hour extension, I think, till 8:00.
And that would be the May through October.
I think, if I might just add, in terms of the market itself, my guess is people that are going to the market or, and are using the elevator are going to have a bunch of stuff to carry with them. They may not be that likely to go to a restaurant afterwards simply because they're carrying stuff.
And it's midweek.
Yeah.
Okay, Lloyd, did you have something to add?
I think Commissioner Neely's thoughts are, makes sense. I was going to recap what I thought I heard.
But, well, actually, no one's really addressed the year-roundness.
Year-round for Friday and Saturday nights.
So I think, I think the idea of the summer season, can we try it during the summer? I don't want to sell us short downtown, but we found even with the Friday night art walk, first Fridays in winter, hard to get people out when it's cold and wet. So why fight the, why fight the current on that? Why not try for a summer season, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, consistently extending the hours for a May through October?
Nancy, your memo suggested that this is a one-year trial period, and we've already secured funding for the May through June 30th portion of it through the tourism maximum funds, 2:00 this afternoon. And so we, we'll, I mean, we'll obviously, since the elevator keeps meticulous records, we'll, we'll know what the, what the first year's trial will be like, and we'll know whether the funding needs to be pursued for the second year.
That's, and to dovetail onto that, maybe I would suggest that, given that maybe we're not thinking the year-round thing, let's take that budget and revisit it and go, okay, well, if we got rid of Fridays and Saturdays in the winter months, then maybe we could do like a Wednesday through Saturday during the peak month, so that you're getting that, it's an awareness to the, to the community, like, oh, well, Wednesday through Saturday, we can, we can count on that thing to open rather than kind of a hit and miss. So it's just a matter of looking at that budget and seeing if we can have that, and then get into the newsletters, get into the city publications, and make sure that we make it, you know, an awareness to everybody, so that it has a fair chance to succeed.
Nancy, what is it that you needed on this? Did you just want a discussion on it, or are you going to bring it to us for a resolution later, or?
Well, it would be, it would require a very minor budget amendment. I don't think it's, I think just direction. I don't think there needs to be a resolution on extending elevator hours.
Okay, is there anyone that has suggestions or wants to go back to the drawing board?
I need to, the one thing I want to point out, though, is to have regularity is very important. So if we start out with something and then it changes, it's not good for the public. If they thought they could go out to dinner on Thursday nights and get the elevator back up, but they can't because it didn't work out, and I really think maybe it would be, I would maybe recommend we start with Friday, Saturday, to hit the really popular, you run the restaurant, Ryan, you know what your big nights are, and then Wednesday night for farmer's market, and then if it was, if we found there was a demand and people are saying, oh, why don't you have it more, more nights, then we could expand it rather than start big and shrink it. But you know the restaurant business better than I do.
Well, I would think, it's weird, but Saturday's not as strong as you would guess. So I would like, Friday's, Friday's great, and you're going to get that trickle over from the downtown people. So I think if we could figure out a way to do like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or do something to where we are experimenting, we're learning what the, what the tendencies are for a weeknight as well. Weeknights are great down there. I mean, it's, it's amazing. Like, last year, Wednesdays were our busiest nights without the farmer's market, so, busier than Saturday.
How was Friday for you?
Friday's.
And Saturday, there's not a parking crunch downtown. Saturday is pretty empty downtown for parking, so.
Okay, well, why don't.
But the pedestrian traffic, we want to think about as well.
So why don't you guys continue to discuss, before you make that final decision, you have a little bit of funding, so then we, you know, if you figure that out, maybe we'll pursue funding.
We can give you an update.
Oriented to visitors for the next fiscal year as well, because that, that funding has to be spent in this fiscal year.
And I guess we also need to be respectful of the contractor and not be pulling, you know, he gets his, his staff set up, and then we start monkeying around with their schedule. That gets a little awkward, so we can talk more.
We can pull some businesses.
Try to keep something fairly consistent.
Okay, Rocky?
Just, well, I think this is something definitely we need to start work on. One of the things for the future that I'm kind of thinking about is with the parking study and all the implementation of that in the, in the future, the discussion was that the possibility of whether we deal with parking in a different way up here on the hill, that that parking fund may actually generate more funds depending on that. And I see definite tie-in with the parking fund and the hours to the elevator for downtown. And so I think that that needs to be a discussion that continues forward as a way to, you know, keep this going in the future.
Yep, Doug?
Could you remind me when we get our, is it on quarterly basis we get the elevator usage?
I think it's quarterly, Commissioner, in fact, I just, I brought.
They get it on a monthly basis, but I don't know, we get the month, the report month up.
We do.
We do?
We get it monthly.
Monthly, with the invoice.
And about how, how long after the end of the month do we get it?
Well, we got it for April on May 4th.
So we're going to, we'll be in a good, if we could actually request the additional monitoring, if we, the current evening hours, for example, say, I don't know, four to closing, and then some, some, some kind of monitoring base, we, we can compare later evening.
They have it, but they do the checkup, if we, we watch them, they do the checkup by the hour.
Yeah, and that's why I want to see those numbers, is what I'm saying.
We can get their hand records, yeah.
Yes, I'm, Lloyd, one last thing?
Yes, please. Affirm what Commissioner Smith stated. I've heard it from downtown professional offices that in the winter, when it isn't as light as late, we do have people that are trying to walk up the hill, maybe not as late as 9:00 or 10:00, but for the professional staff downtown, in the winter, that does also become an issue as related to parking, less so much to do the visitors, so.
Yeah, that's definitely in the parking study.
Yeah, on the term, it makes sense.
Thank you, we'll look at this again. Okay, next, also Nancy, we're, to that season again, hanging baskets in Oregon City. We've had as many as three basket programs, and now we're looking at, I think, consolidating those.
Right. What we, what we've done here, Mayor and Commissioners, is to advise you that we are submitting an application for the flower, flower baskets. And however, there's been a fair amount of discussion and disagreement, and what we're feeling is we're not really comfortable proposing, we felt like we needed to get some sort of support, well, I don't want to use support, because this is a different committee. Metro Enhancement is your own committee and you're on it, and so you've got to be really careful that I'm not trying, this is not anything about lobbying. It's more like, we plan to submit this like we have in the past. This is a fabulous program that started with Cindy Toll for the McLaughlin neighborhood, gosh, probably nine or 10 years ago now. And it's gotten more and more consolidated, so it really makes sense just to submit one package, and we do the entire, we do McLaughlin, we do downtown, we do the parking fund, baskets all in one group. And then this last year, we actually expanded it up Molalla Avenue and put some on Beaver Creek, where we have all these streetscape improvements that both private developers have done, as well as the city, and to give it, really give us more of the entire city the opportunity to enjoy this on a daily basis. And as you all know, we have, these are on arterials that have, some have over 16,000 cars a day on them, so they're very well-traveled. But regardless of that, because there's been a fair amount of controversy with the city applying for money at Metro Enhancement for this, as well as other, other programs, and the OCCIT as well, we wanted to make sure, we wanted to find out if there's going to be, we think the city commission needs to discuss if they want city projects going to compete for Metro Enhancement funds and OCCIT funds, or is there going to be an alternate funding source for these programs, or do we stop the programs?
To date, we have affirmed, and all of my colleagues see if there's anything different, but we have affirmed that the city, as well as any other jurisdictions, may apply and compete on, on the same field as other applicants. McLaughlin Neighborhood Association also has an application in, so there are actually two this year.
That's for finishing up the watering on the ones that they got last year?
Oh, is it? We haven't, we haven't gotten that. We just got the line item, we didn't get what it.
Right, it's a small amount to wrap up the second, yeah, the July through September.
Okay. Are there any other memories that are different than that direction? Because that was the direction that we gave to the community. We don't normally take public testimony at work sessions.
This is an issue, though, very related to this.
Well, let me wait, get my colleagues and see if it comes up, and then we'll see. Doug?
The, the difficulty I had was, was two, dealing with the, with the funding of the, of the concerts in the park.
Right.
It was the amount. You know, if they, if they come, I mean, they look for sponsorships. If they came to the, if they came to the, to the committee there and say, we have this $2,000 level of sponsorship, would the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust go ahead and be a sponsor, one of the sponsors? And if it wasn't for 12,500 or something like that, I mean, it was, it was by far the biggest request that we had. And that's where, that's where my, my problem lies, not so much a project supported by the city. But you have had projects that have been put forward by groups that actually were directed at the city, and the one that comes to mind, and something because I'm involved in the Board of It, is the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, which did specific work both on public works property and on parks property. And the city, of course, benefited because the work was done on those. But it was a group coming forward to do it. It wasn't the city coming forward to put forward the proposal. And so I think, I mean, if, if you're doing it, if you're writing the grant in Silver, then, and of course, grants have been, have been submitted on the 5th, weren't they?
Right, the deadline has passed.
If the city has submitted the proposal, then I'm concerned about it. If, in fact, groups of citizens have submitted to some more, submitted the proposal, I'm far less concerned about it.
Okay, then the question is, I think, before us, is that same one. So then, therefore, it's either no baskets, if there's no opportunity to apply to our grant funds, or are we willing to support it in the general fund? I think that's essentially what, what the staff from OCCIT as well as this, because it's, it's a source of funds that comes for beautification, you know, we meet the criteria as well, but it's a philosophical question. I mean, right now, you know, that view is a, has been the minority view, because OCCIT and Metro Enhancement have, have supported both of these programs, because I think the citizens on those committees haven't wanted to see them go away. So, you know, in a city that's financially challenged, it's tough to do things like this, because these are the kinds of things that would be cut in any kind of downturn of, you know, the budget. So, Rocky?
Part of, part of my conflict with this is, has really not been even the asking for the grant itself. It's, it's the, it's the false, maybe illusion that it's going to be a given every year. And with a grant, we have to make judgments on whatever's applied for, for that grant. So, you know, on, you know, there might be other projects that somehow are rated higher or lower or whatever, so it's, it's not necessarily so much that I, I don't think it's the right place necessarily, but it's, it's, it's can't be known as a given. And if it's, if we're going to use the grant process as a way to fund city events, then they're going to have to take the risk at how they measure up against the other projects and win or lose. So that's one of the things. If this, I don't mind having the conversation as a commission on whether we support this through the general fund, if we think it's important, and if, if that's a general consensus, I, I've, I'm, I would support that, too. I just think it's, it's wrong to, you know, the, the grant process is kind of an important one to foster new programs and other things, and I think so many times, some of the new programs that could get jump-started in the city think, oh, well, it's not worth it, because they always fund this project for the city and this project for the city. And, and we've always kind of seen those as an annual thing that we give out, and that's not really the way that grant process should work. So I kind of, I think if staff really feels, and the community really feels that this is an important project, then we need to find a place to fund it and, and not rely on the grant as just an, an annual, you know, grant. Because it's almost like we're making the decisions before we have the grant. Part of, part of my, um, conflict with this is, has really not been even the asking for the grant itself, it's, it's the, it's the false, maybe illusion that it's gonna be a given every year, and, and with a grant, um, we have to make judgments on whatever's applied for, for that grant, so, you know, on, you know, there might be other projects that somehow are rated higher or lower or whatever, so it's, it's not necessarily so much that I, I don't think it's the right, uh, place necessarily, but it's, 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 it can't be known as a given, and, and if it's, if we're gonna use the grant process as a way to fund city events, then they're gonna have to take the risk at how they measure up against the other projects and, and win or lose, um, so that's one of the things, if, if this, I don't mind having the conversation, um, as a commission on whether we support this through the general fund, if we think it's important, and if, if that's a general consensus, I, I've, I'm, I would support that too, I just think it's, it's, it's wrong to, um, um, you know, the, the grant process is, is, is kind of, um, an important one to foster new programs and other things, and I think so many times, some of the new programs that could get jump-started in the city think, oh, well, it's not worth it, because they always fund this project for the city and this project for the city, and, and we've always kind of seen those as a, an annual thing that we give out, and that's not really the way that grant process should work, um, so I, I kind of, um, I think if staff, um, really feels, and the community really feels that this is an important project, then we need to find a place to fund it, and, and not rely on the grant as just an, an annual, you know, grant, because it's almost like we're making the decisions before we have the grant process, and, and I don't think that's fair to the other applicants of the grant.
And there are actually quite a few, um, repeat applications every year through Metro Enhancement.
Yeah, I, I sit in a foundation, and, um, we actually fund, uh, many of them every year unless there's a disturbance in their court field.
We've been doing that transportation-wise in the region.
I don't even think it's a bad thing that they, they ask for it year after year, but they have to know that maybe one year they're not gonna get it, and they, and, and we have to just say, well, that's, that's too bad for this year, because it didn't rate up with the other projects, and I think, so I, I'm open to the discussion about, you know, funding this in other ways, and I would support that if we find.
But, that's, then it sounds as if from this discussion that, um, see how Metro Enhancement falls, and then following that, there may be the need for a different discussion, David.
Well, one thing I want to mention is, uh, knowing that the history here that I've just learned recently about the basket program and how you guys have funded it and grappled with the, I, I think it really makes a lot of sense to, to look at the continuity of the program and ask ourselves next year in the budget process, whether working through that process with the staff, which, as you know, our proposed budget is, is completed, and I'd like to have a, a forbearance, if you will, for a while, maybe till next budget cycle, and, uh, work with my staff and try to figure out some other alternatives for funding this on a more consistent basis, so that it gets off the radar of the grant application, and I've got a few ideas, and I'm sure there's gonna be many more, um, but we could bring that forward to the Budget Committee next year and work it through the regular process, and then you wouldn't see that appear anymore as a competitor in, in the packet, with the grant funds.
Doug?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I expressed my concern, and, uh, and unfortunately, I didn't really look at the agenda until about two hours before, but having this item actually come before the commission, uh, I, I know you don't like to get beaten up at a budget meeting, uh, and that's, and I think that's part of it.
Actually, I, I think probably shouldn't get beaten up anytime.
But the point, the point is, this, having this coming before the commission is, is a little problematic, because it's, we're not the one that makes the decision, and it's almost, it's almost like, should we do this, and the point is, you've already submitted your grant, I would have preferred that we had not even seen this and had this discussion after the fact instead of before the fact, because we're, even, even if it's not the intent, uh, there may be the appearance that somehow we're being lobbied a little bit ahead of time on the, on the, on the process, and I, I wish this hadn't happened in this particular fashion, I think this is a decision that the Budget Committee has to make, and you submit the grant proposals and.
Well, Metro Enhancement first.
Yeah, Metro Enhancement first, uh, you, you submit them, and, um, you know, the, the committee makes its own decision, and the fact that you have a couple of commissioners, city commissioners upset about it, is not, I don't think it's a major thing, I mean.
City Commissioners are upset all the time.
Yes, I'm intrigued.
Nancy, did you want to find a response?
I guess, given the fact that it is a, um, it's a project, this particular project, and then the other projects we're talking about, um, as city staff, we feel like we're representing the city commission, and we, we would love, we'd rather avoid having, we'd like to work things out ahead of time, if, I mean, not that you're saying yes or no to the grant, but, but, uh, it would be really nice to, to make, and I think maybe in next budget cycle is a good time to do it, is make some decisions about what we're going to do with these programs, and not, um, have a, a feeling of sort of conflict when we, city staff bring these projects that are good for the, they're all good for the community, but there's also a feeling that we're, we are working for the city commission.
And I like David's solution, I think that's really wise, for staff to evaluate that.
I think I can sum up what Nancy's saying, and, and I wanted to do this really because Commissioner Neely had brought it up about the process while we're here, and I think it may be come down to that judgment call of whether to, um, seek permission or forgiveness, uh, you know, and I think we were erring on the side of permission to apply, but what I'd really like to press again is, uh, maybe, would there be any of you that would be opposed, for example, to me and the staff, or the staff and I, looking at the alternatives for general fund funding, or some other source, actually, we might even look at utility funds or other places where there's something consistent in there, so that we know, uh, for example, things that we're always gonna want to do, and some of those things are like police and utilities and other services that we know we're going to do as a community probably forever, and those are places where generally you wouldn't have them, uh, dependent on grant funding, so I think that that would be a great solution, but it does require, um, one more year, I guess, of looking at this as a potential funding source as an applicant.
Okay, any other enlightenment, all right, let's move on then to, I don't have you.
Oh, you're in the right spot.
I do.
Doug?
Indirectly, I think, when we were having our, our, our food over there before we came into the meeting, there's something was alluded to in terms of discussions of when you had, for example, a paid versus a volunteer type of situation, one of the things that I think you need to balance is, if the city ends up taking over the funding through a certain process, you may have groups that have stepped up to make contributions to that process start dropping off, and I think you gotta figure out, well, and that's, so I think you gotta figure out a process in which, in fact, any, even if you build in the budget, the, the budget isn't intended to fund the whole thing, that you are going to seek support from businesses or service groups or something else.
I, I have an idea that I could just kind of throw out there, one of the things we might think about would be a 50-50 match, and for, or a 70-30 or some other percentage, I mean, there are, uh, many grants that are structured that way, and so the city would have a baseline of, say, 70% of the funding, but if you wanted, you know, baskets in this particular area, you'd have to generate contributions, and that would encourage people to donate, but at the same time guarantee us a certain baseline of funding, so that's another option, I mean, there are many that we can, uh, grapple with between now and next year.
I think that's a possibility, but I also, I also would, would, would submit the question, is that, is that the best place for business donors to place their money, and so to me, that's a huge, huge issue, um, I know in other communities there have been evolutionary things, I, I know we can talk to neighbors about, uh, neighboring communities about how they do their, their basket programs, and most of them now have gone to city funding, because it's, first of all, it's, it's much easier to do, you might want to even think of fewer baskets too, to make the program work, but anyway, we'll look forward to a more robust discussion then next year, after you guys have your robust discussion. Okay, moving on then to something else, um, very important to us, and that's the police facility remodel, Chief, is that you? So you think that old place up there on Warner Millie Road needs remodeling?
It does need remodeling, it does, you know, I was, I was really actually pleased when we went out to bid, we had 16 firms, if I, if I remember right, bid on the, uh, project, and the low bid, as you can see in your, uh, commission report, was JWC, which is 166, 950, and, uh, the high bid was about $80,000 more than that, so you can see it, it ranged in, in quite a bit of difference, we originally had, um, in our funding to do this, about a half a million dollars, so I think we were, were pretty frugal in how we designed the plans and how we envisioned redoing that for a, a, a low cost to the taxpayer, um, and I was really pleased when the bids did come in at this low, we, we originally anticipated somewhere in the low 200s, so it came in even probably about $40,000 less than we thought it was gonna come in, according to the architect's estimate, um, I, I would like to, to mention one thing, though, there, there are a couple things that, um, we're probably gonna have to spend a little bit of additional money on, one of those is signage, uh, we forgot to include in the original bid, that we had put probably a sign out in the street, uh, where the old city hall sign was at, and also redoing that sign that used to be up on, on the side of the building, the front of the building, that said, uh, "City of Oregon City," and had the other, a couple of other departments listed there, we need to just kind of clean that up a little bit and make it look a little bit better, and, uh, as with any other project, there'll be, probably a few other things that as we go along, we'll add, to add some additional costs to, including maybe a, uh, a shower, which wasn't in the original plans, so, I, I, yeah, having thought about that, I, I think it might be a good idea to, to maybe do that now, looking at, it might be a, a couple more years before we, before we even entertain the idea of, uh, having a police department built, asking the voters, or finding some other funding mechanism to build a police department, I, I think it'd be money well worth spent, so.
Chief, we don't have, uh, a document you referred to that tells us, at least I can't find it, doesn't mean you don't have it, uh, that refers to 16 proposals.
Uh, I didn't include them, I can't get those to you in the film?
No, 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 that, even the number and the, and the spread of the bids.
Right, I, I did not include those in the packet.
Okay, that, okay.
I do have them, and I can get them to you if you'd like to see, uh, the bidders.
I think that, um, in other contracts that we approve, I assume we're going to see this on Wednesday?
Yes.
Um, uh, usually that, we have the, the, the bidders and the spread of the bids.
Okay, I'll make sure that's included from there, so.
Unless there's something confidential in that.
No, no, not at all, not at all.
Any questions about the remodel? Great.
He made the statement, I was gonna say, mate, so I didn't have to do it.
Yeah, me too.
This is really, I'd love if we can cut down the chatter unnecessarily.
You want me to tell you what the statement he made was?
No, no, I don't really, okay, let's go, we all know. Okay, now, another, um, request, an update from, uh, the, our pool and something, who's, is that Denise Kye?
Evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, um, we kind of felt that with this project update, um, it was requested by the Budget Committee that we come back to the commission and give an update on the pool projects that we've done and the pool needs, uh, we've, we've felt that in the past that, um, words speak, words speak well, but pictures say more.
That's certainly true of the pictures of the old city hall.
So we're gonna kind of go through, um, a slide presentation, okay, um, and you'll see a lot of side-by-sides, and with these side-by-sides, you'll hopefully see a difference, um, quite a number of these projects were done on contingency funds, and we can address those as we go through, but just to get you through this, um, it is an early 1960s building, and it's a CMU cinder block building, and so it does need some care occasionally, hopefully more than every 40 years, so, um, if you notice, we have gone and done the exterior, and the signage really wasn't existent, so we have put some signage to it, we service over 102,000 visitors per year, and we will probably exceed that this year, um, we do partner with the school district for swim lessons throughout the school year, we also partner with Oregon City High School, Glad, Gladstone High School, and the Oregon City Swim Team, which is a club team here in town, and they have youth and masters.
That's a really cool statistic about 102 visits, that as far as I know, the only thing in the city that exceeds that, except I don't know about the McLaughlin overview, is the Oregon City Elevator.
Remember those numbers when we get to the last page.
Okay.
So this is just, it, we made the entrance point, we've, what's not on this picture, we've also included some, um, entrance lights, this is mainly where people with, um, disabilities will come in, because it's the most accessible of the two entrances in the front, um, we have done a facility assessment in 2006, the assessment, as you can see, has renovation dollars that are about 1.2 million, and that's the existing building with what they had at that time identified, although since I've been here, the three years I've been here, we have identified other hazards and things that need to be addressed, um, the replacement cost for a facility, 6.9 million, or about 9 million total project, and that is not including site acquisition, the park master plan that we did the update in 2008 had a high sense from the community through a survey, that they would like to retain the existing facility versus a new building, and under that scenario, we have been doing upgrades as we can with a very limited budget, so we did a, excuse me, are we gonna get rid of that? Do you know how to bring that up? Yeah. About that, um, obviously, I'm not the technician here, um, so we did an energy trust audit because we know it's an older building and it was not energy efficient, um, with that audit, they identified several items that could make this a very efficient, or efficient in terms of a 60s building, so we, um, incorporated the recommendations at a cost of about, I think it was $102,000, um, and we did get tax credits back on that, and, um, what they said is that our averaging all cost savings would result in a payback period of 3.5 years, and we are averaging about $16,000 in cost savings with just these renovations that we've done. So we have done the interior and the exterior on the CMU walls, which, um, made it a lot more friendly and eye appealing, so we have done that, and that was a contingency-supported project, and we thank you very much, um, our patrons are noticing a difference, our staff is noticing a difference, and we have reinvested a lot of our community back into the pool, just based on it doesn't look, what they say, yucky, so our locker rooms, um, over the course of 40 years, the surfacing on the concrete kind of gets really smooth, so then we have slippage, so we've put non-slip surfaces on most of the flooring in the water areas, so our locker rooms, our office and the deck have all been incorporated in the non-slip, and we did get a coefficient of friction rating on that, and we do meet DHS, which was fabulous, so we are, um, not seeing as many slips, which is a liability to the city, so, um, moving on, this is, the first year I was here, I saw this stairway and I about died, if you know anything about stairways and that last little step there, we didn't meet codes, so we, we did, and it had holes in it, and that top corner one is a, a resin that they put in to keep the hole from poking anybody, so immediately, we ran through that project through another contingency fund, um, request, so thank you very much, we, um, have new stairs, new rails, with the appropriate codes for guardrails, um, the stanchions that held the slide were also rusted through, and so it wasn't really bearing weight on a lot, so we changed those out, so the slide is now very safe, co-compliant, DHS is, is with us on that one as well. This is our outdoor swimming pool, which would be our roof, um, so last year, we asked for contingency request, um, it was granted.
Is that a standard lane width for a race?
That's about a two-lane, two-lane outdoor pool. So, um, this had been a longstanding issue, where we were retaining a lot of, um, water on the roof decks, they were replaced with, um, the HVAC system for a little over $300,000, so if you'll look to the top right where the highlights are for the HVAC and the skylights, that HVAC unit was rusting through, we also had a gas leak in one of them, which as soon as that was detected through regular monthly or quarterly maintenance, that one was shut down, and we now have the shiny new ones that you see up there, and they're a lot more energy efficient, so our energy efficiency ratings also get higher with more implementation of energy-efficient appliances that we've put into the building, the skylights were also leaking, and so nowadays, we put curbing on them, and so we have curbing and new skylights. Part of our issue in our pool is that our, um, starting blocks for competition swim, some of them resided in, in places that were considered hazards, one of them was right underneath this platform, so if you stood on the starting block and you were more than six feet tall, you could not go upwards with any flexing of the toes or jumping, you might have a headache, so we went back through and we cut down that platform, because high dive platforms now have a rating for depth in the water, and we don't meet that, so obviously, we wouldn't reinstitute the diving, so we moved that, and then if you look to the other side of the slide, you'll see the diving board, we, the diving board actually covered over the edge of a starting block, and the railings were out in front of it, so if somebody put their arm out in extension, we don't always have, we have good swimmers, but sometimes your beginners don't always have the best lineup, so we want to make sure that nobody gets hurt in our pool. and the railings were out in front of it. So if somebody put their arm out in extension, we don't always have, we have good swimmers, but sometimes your beginners don't always have the best lineup. So we want to make sure that nobody gets hurt in our pool. We closed that one down, and then we put in a plan to move the diving board, which we'll show you later. We have a high number of seniors and special needs visits, and so we were able to institute a new ADA, excuse me, lift and stairs. This is our newly renovated diving board, which once we had it stripped down and checked out, because we took it apart, we found that it had cracks in it. So we fixed those cracks, had it inspected again, and reset it up, but we set it up between the two blocks. There's four little markers on each side of the diving board, and now we're centered, and it's not covering any of the starting blocks. This is the ceiling damage we currently still have in the facility. We were able to do the roof structure, but we have yet to get to these areas. And if you look at the cost factors, you'll see why. And this is extensive throughout the building, just based on the amount of infiltration from the old roofing structure we had. The lower picture is the naditorium, which is an asbestos acoustical treatment, which is absolutely fine to have, as long as it's sealed. And the reason we abated that section was because it was having water come through it. So we abated that section, the edges are sealed, and so what we would like to do in the future is to seal the entire ceiling again. Typically, you just want to keep that maintained. Then we would also like to patch that bare concrete. We have a lot of that acoustical ceiling tile, which has drywall underneath it, which when it gets wet, crumbles. And so just taking the acoustical tiles down isn't going to be the fix. We'll have to replace some of that subsurface structure. The window system, some of the windows are plexiglass, and so in the past, I guess, when we have high winds, plexiglass flexes. I'm assuming, according to staff previous to me, five years ago or so, one of those plexiglass windows flexed enough to fall out into the deck space and hit a child. So there are extra bracing supports that are laid into the window system. It's not a perfect fix, it's not energy efficient. It's something we would like to address in the future. Our flooring in the building is held together in places with packaging tape.
Is that better than duct tape?
No, not necessarily, but it was what they had at the time. But we also have a lot of warping, a lot of cracking of the hard tiles, and then we have some lifting, and it makes for trip hazards and other issues that we would like to abate at some point in time. Again, cost factoring is always an issue for us in prioritizing. These are our acoustical tiles. They are mandated by DHS and OSHA that we have them in our facility, although these are in not-good status at this point. And if you look at what they look like, and then you look at the back at how many we have, that is one end. We have another end full of those. We also have the great 1960 metal lockers in a pool facility. Ann Crandall is fabulous and wonderful. She saves us a ton, a ton of money. She is constantly fixing these, because they rust and bind, the exterior of them rust, and she will go in with steel wool and hand take down the rust on these. So on a shutdown, she will do almost each and every one of these, so that they don't look horrific. This is our waiting pool. It's free to the public all summer. We run it about Memorial Weekend on through to September. It needs a new resurfacing. Those white blotches are the surfacing coming up, and we're looking at a non-slip product, so that we do again meet DHS coefficient of frictions. In the report, it was estimated to convert this to a spray park at a cost of about 1.3 million. And it has to have separate pumps and chlorination and those types of things, so it's a mechanical issue, and where we place all these, it's a big undertaking, so that's why the cost is so high. Did you have a question?
I just want to go back to the acoustical tiles. What's the product like that you would install in 2010?
We have to go research what we could put in a pool facility. Obviously, they're building facilities with that type of treatment.
But it doesn't have such an obvious look today? Is it more blended?
You can get a lot bigger tiles instead of those little tiny ones, and it looks more like part of your wall than individual tiles.
Okay.
So modern technology has improved.
Thank you.
We also have not done anything with the pool liner and the tiles that go around our pool. In the next two to three years, because we're seeing thinning of the plaster, it will need to be refinished, and that's a sandblasting and then a replastering. It's actually not too extensive of a project. It sounds overwhelming, but it's really not too-too-bad. In the cost factors, we did some estimates. They're roughly about $50,000. And then just as we go through and move forward, we kind of prioritize our issues that we work on through life safety, hazards, code issues, things that'll close us, and then we try and touch on ADA. But we also work under the cart and horse theory. If we can get something else done in the mix of that and not have to go back to it, we try and incorporate those as well. But this building has been under deferred maintenance for so very many years, that we're coming to a point of seriously reactionary maintenance versus preventative maintenance and updates. So what we have been doing isn't anything that takes us very much forward, but it definitely puts us in a period of what we can maintain after. But we have so much other things that we are trying to catch up on, that we're really, it's what's going to fall next. So what we wanted to come to you today is just to give you that update, let you kind of see what we have that we deal with. I have a full litany of things that we've done that I didn't show you. But our facility's maintenance budget, just for the building, that includes our chemicals, is $39,000. So the things that we were looking at in the ticket prices, it obviously will need something more than $39,000 to move forward on it. The other piece that we had was the swim team had presented a request on April 21st for funding of relocating or replacing the slide to allow placement of another starting block. We have six lanes to our pool. We're down to five. We were down to three until we moved the slide and took the platform off. So we're up to five. That gives them competition abilities and scoring ratings. They are requesting that relocation or replacement of the slide. We've gotten five or six different options. None of them the most optimal. They're roughly about $20,000 to $25,000 projected in that project. And if you have more questions of the swim team, Brian Watt is here, who made the request. And we did move the diving board, we did do the platform, we did those under contingency, and we did have some funding from the swim team. So they did a one-third funding of that project. We had proposed originally that we would do all three projects, the slide, the platform, and the diving board, but found that our estimates for the slide change were not realistic, and we're actually going to be double. So we were able to do two of the three projects, and the swim team did put funding towards that. They are also projecting to put funding towards the relocation of the slide. And I don't want to speak for Brian on how much, but he is here if you guys want to ask questions of Brian as well.
Okay, so is that the end of your slideshow?
That's the end of it.
Okay, thank you. So in your $39,733 annual maintenance budget, I assume that replacing the liner of the pool is not in that?
No, we just, that's daily regular operational maintenance. None of the, we were able to do-
None of those projects that you talked to us about really are in there?
Not really. We have done a few things, like our Virginia Graham Baker Act. We changed out our main drain grates and things like that. We're able to incorporate some small-ticket item fixes with our regular maintenance. We changed out the carpet in the front. We've done a window replacement. We can do little items here and there throughout each year, and we usually pick a couple of items on our priority list, like the ADA stairs and, excuse me, some other of those items. But nothing large. Usually, we wait for something to fail, like the roof, or, you know, those types of things. Where it's a life safety issue, the roof was leaking on our main electrical panel, and we actually had plastic diverting it away from the electrical panels. So we came to you with a photo montage of the dire need for a new roof, which we're very grateful for, and it's made an enormous improvement to the facility. But we also, we also know that at some point, there needs to be a further discussion as to what direction you want us to move toward with this facility.
So you set your own priorities, and so in your annual, so the swim blocks are not in your current set of priorities for funding?
Twenty to $25,000, we have our set of priorities come from life safety first, hazard. That doesn't really fall into it. The situation that we're in, that's more of an amenity. It impacts the swim teams. It's half our budget. What can we accomplish for the 102,000 visits versus competitive swimming? We have to balance that priority of our partners and our community. And so we've chosen in our budget to make sure the vast community is getting the things that protect them, that keep our facility running. So.
Just an editorial comment before you talk, Brian, and welcome. You know, to me, flower baskets versus issues with the pool, those are tough issues when we consider our general fund dollars. So, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We want to give us your spiel. I guess you need to introduce yourself.
Well, yeah, Brian Watt, swim dad, and a lot of other things. Happy to be here tonight, ma'am, Commissioners. And on behalf of the team, you know that I'm happy, and you know the team's happy, and we've had a meet, and it is limited, although we have Denise to thank for it and the staff in helping us get through this and navigate it. The team does want the sixth lane, and I think it would benefit not just the Oregon City Swim Team, but as Denise showed, the Oregon City High School team, for instance, who spent over $1,000 going to Malala for their dual meets all last year, the last season. That's just a for instance. Gladstone High School also uses the pool. And so out of the monies, the one-third that we put forward toward the cost of the two projects we've already done, we actually have $3,300 remaining, and we did not use $6,600 of the $12,000 that the Commission said that we could use, around $6,600, approximately.
And that's a contingency request?
So $6,600 went back to the city from the $12,000 that we talked about last year. And I guess what I can tell you is that the team is willing, and I've talked to them, and I've talked to the board, and we've actually had our Swimathon fundraiser, which went very well. And we can put forward more funds for this, and we are ready to. We are eager to see this project done in September during the closure. Because what we see down the road is potentially, if we don't get it done this September, we'll have to wait an entire year until the pool is drained again for the two-week, excuse me, two-week closure in September 2011. So the time to act is now, and that's the way the team sees it, and the need is there. And what I mean by limited, and that's how I started my comment, you can have a limited meet, and we thank you for that, and I'm not downplaying the fact that we had a meet, and it was a good meet. I stand by that comment I made. But it is limited to the amount of teams that you can bring in, and the amount of kids that you can have to run a meet. Meets have changed over the years, and for instance, you can only have 11 and unders at the pool for a certain period of time. So if you have lane limitations, you don't have as much time for the 11-and-under competitions, et cetera. So for bigger meets, for the high school, certainly for Oregon City High School, et cetera. And adding to that the fact that the team is still willing to, even above and beyond the $3,300 that was originally stated as a part of our agreement last year.
Okay.
We're ready to support that.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
Could you just give us a feeling what the difference would be in terms of the meets, the new teams you could have if you had that extra lane?
For instance, I think we had about 150 swimmers at the last meet in March that we had, the meet that you know about. We could probably double that, I would imagine, and we could make it a two-day meet, too. So we were amazed, actually, by the number of responses that we got from the teams in the area, that they actually wanted to come and compete in the five lanes that we had. But we were happy that Walton Hills was there, and the MAC Club was there, and that was really awesome to see those clubs there. But we could probably have 10 teams come. And in addition to that, the Masters, we could host Masters meets as well, and the high school dual meets would come back to Oregon City. And to me, that's a pride issue, too, for the city, to have our swimming meets, our dual meets in Oregon City at the pool is a big deal. I would think it's a big deal to the kids and to the coaches, too.
Thank you. David?
Well, I'm inspired to mention again, one of the Budget Committee members during our Budget Committee mentioned, I think Mr. Archer was talking about the cost of deferred maintenance, and here we have a striking example of the department and Denise and Scott and the other folks that are working there, and the users, doing everything they can to make up for deferred maintenance that, you know, that somebody has to be blamed many, many years ago, or it's simply trying to do too much without enough resources. And so one of the things that I know Scott had experience doing for the city of Medford when he worked there was developing the methodology for the parks utility fee that we spoke about at the Budget Committee. So again, it seems like all my answers have a 12-month timeline, but this is one where it's just exciting to see the commitment these folks have, and I'm really encouraged by that. And I want to let you know that we intend to have Scott working on that throughout the next 12 months and next year at the Budget Committee. We may be able to get, finally, these buildings to a place where they can be funded a more sustainable way once they get caught up, and that's one of the things we'll be looking at. So thanks.
Yeah, pool's a tough one.
Let me make one more comment, ma'am, real quick.
Quickly.
The, one of the things that we want to do, like I said, is to give a little bit more, put a little bit more toward this project. And if we could have at least maybe a starting point of how much the city would be willing to or be able to put toward this project, this final project, that would allow us to plan around it and to talk about that number, to see whether or not we could match it, or we could supply the remaining amount to make this project happen.
Well, I think you and Denise might have to talk about that, because I probably would say to you, so how much can you put up? So I think we're gonna probably have to have a request. I don't know whether grant funds can help. You've gotten some grant funds at the pool, I know.
I had grant funds at the pool. This project in particular, it's very hard to get grant funds for. It's very small, and it services, the end result services a limited group.
Yeah.
So it's hard to kind of put forth one of those.
And we can't classify them as tourists? We need to, yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a continuous stupid dilemma. Strategic investment zone, I believe we're going to hold over, is that correct, to another time, till June? Okay, we'll see it then. So let's move on, then, to the update on the loan to South Fork Water Board and the options for that, where it comes from. Dave Wimmer, our finance director.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As asked, I just put together some possibilities for allocating the interest on the loan from Oregon City to South Fork Water Board, and I've picked three logical ones. There's, as I mentioned in my memory, it's endless. We have 37 funds, and we could spend all the rest of our life trying to allocate, and none of them would be wrong. But it seems logical to me that the funds loaning the money should get at least what they would have earned had they not loaned the money, and it was also some interest. And it was also some interest in giving the water fund some money, so. The three, the three that struck me as being the closest to that objective, one was to pay the general fund and the PERS bond fund, what they would be getting under the, from the local government pool and, and giving all the rest to the water board, I mean to the water fund. In that, in that case, the general fund would receive about forty-two thousand, the PERS rate fund had received about nine thousand and the water fund received about two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand. This, these are all assuming that South Fork is going to take seven years to pay off the bond. They may not take that long and the interest rate, the total interest will be significantly less. The second scenario is giving all of the interest to the loaning funds prorata based on what they're contributing and that would leave out the water fund. And in that case, the general fund would get about two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand and the PERS rate fund would get fifty-six thousand. A third alternative, which I thought was, to me it would seem like was a nice compromise, to give water, the water fund half of the interest, which is basically one-point-seven-five percent and split the other prorata to the general fund and the PERS rate fund. In that case, the general fund would get a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, the PERS rate, the general fund would get a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, the PERS rate fund would get twenty-eight thousand and the water fund would get a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. So excited to spend the rest of your life coming up with various alternatives, but see by these fell within my idea of, of reasonables. And there is really no urgency on deciding what we, when we do this because the first interest won't come in until June of two thousand and eleven and at, and they'll even have two or three months after that because they'll still be adjusting the books for two thousand and eleven up into August or so.
You know, whether, this could really be held over to our, the board work session in January because a lot more will be known, a lot, different priorities will be set at that time.
Right, now if you want to, maybe you can set that time and you talk about flower baskets or pool or something, if you may want to give the general fund more of this. This is not a forever revenue stream, but it can certainly do some decent one-time things.
Thank you for doing this work because I think this is very thought-stimulating about what, what.
Yeah, I wake up every morning. Spend the first three hours doing another, wasting a lot of paper and computers.
That's why you do what you do. Any questions on this or different options you'd like Dave to run tomorrow morning?
Look at your on the floor.
Doug?
Well, Commissioner Nacita brought it up at the time and I heard some favorable reactions to it, to actually use some of this funding at least for issues of water habitat and I think we have to look at it as part of our goal-setting session and, and, because right now what's being suggested, well, that's not fair, I mean you're saying some of it come, come into the general fund, but how that money in the general fund is used ought to be a major focus, I think, of the decision-making process at the goal-setting sessions.
Yeah, I agree. David?
Well, I'm just going to suggest something very simple, well, it's consistent with what Commissioner Neely just said, which was barring any particular direction, when that comes to us next year and it could be allocated to any number of different capital projects that are related to the issues that Commissioner Nacita brought up. So you're not, you're not foreclosed by, by anything we're doing here to not, and not be able to do that. So I just wanted to remind you of that and we'll look forward to that discussion when you're ready.
Nice opportunity. Thank you for that, good work, David. Okay. Gosh, we're really close to our tracking tonight, too. Six four, just a little tiny bit behind, so Terry, if you talk really quickly, we can have a report on the visitor's center.
I can talk very quickly. Thank you, Madam Mayor and commissioners. As you recall, the visitor's center at the end of the Oregon Trail site is funded through the Clackamas County Tourism Development Council. There is sixty thousand dollars on a fiscal basis that is put towards staffing operations at the visitor's center. Last December, you had agreed to allow Clackamas Heritage Partners to continue for that following six months of that fiscal year, to do that pass-through, to continue to pay for that staffing. That contract with CHP expires this June thirtieth and so we are now in a situation where a decision needs to be made whether to continue to do that pass-through from TDC through CHP or to look at other alternatives. And the county has informed us that they are still interested in continuing the services and the funding at the visitor's center. We would like to explore the option of looking at another possibility besides CHP. The Chamber of Commerce has expressed an interest that they would consider moving into that facility and renting a portion. However, there are a number of questions that would still need to be answered and some logistics that would need to be worked out. And so we would just like your direction on whether you would like us to go forth with discussions with the Chamber of Commerce or look at other alternatives or which one could possibly be continuing with CHP.
Rocky and I sat in on a meeting with the county where we discussed these options and I certainly think that it's a nice fit if the chamber were, I, I think to try to pursue negotiations with the chamber would be a nice, for me, a, a nice partnership. I'd, I'd like to see that, that go forward, yeah, I think it could be really good. We need, we need a presence there. I think the visitor, I think to lose the visitor's center might need to lose it forever. So I think it needs to have continuous operation and so I'd like to see it go forward. Doug?
It's too bad that we had that setback in our task force evaluation of the use of that facility because that process will still be going on through June and I'd almost like to not be forced to make a decision of that kind earlier on, but I think it, it really depends upon what kind of services the chamber is, is willing to render as, as being in there in that facility and that's my big concern.
Well, the, the chamber wouldn't be doing the visitor's center services.
So the fifty thousand dollars would not be going to?
No, it's, it would be a pass-through, I think, but remember as we discussed before, that why the money went through CHP is that if it goes through a government, we'll have to pay benefits. And so to run it through a nonprofit is a way to enable the, to be least cost, I guess. But one of the issues when CHP vacated, decided, they're not totally vacated, but as their presence decreases and the operations of visitor's center need to be seven days a week, that's not safe for a single woman to be in a, an office in a facility of that size. So it's a safety and security issue, so to be able to, so either you hire two people, which is a greater cost, or you develop a scenario like, oh, let's put an organization in there that has, you know, a mission that might be accomplished in that kind of a deal. So that's a little bit more background. And I think in the negotiations, I'm sure have become very important that, that, well, the scenario for the end of the trail task force is that likely the work will be done in September, recommendations will come to us, September, October. Obviously we'll futz around for about six months while we decide what to do. Well, sorry, we may not, but that is our pattern from the past and.
It's called constructive engagement.
Yeah, constructive engagement.
Engagement for about six or seven months.
Yes, that will happen, but I think the bigger dilemma for the city likely will be implementing a funding and finding a funding stream because again, it's one of those unfunded deals, though I'm looking eagerly at the new fund that the TDC is putting in for their tourism money, so Tourism Development, their Tourism Development Fund may be a possible application. I think it's due in September. But anyway, other questions on the, you know, see type or any concerns or direction to staff on, you gonna keep it going?
Just, just to make sure that there's clarification. So currently the way it's set up is the pass-through does go from the county through CHP to pay for the staffing. So we would need to work with the county on getting some kind of contract in place for them, whether, if it's the chamber or whomever. Right. And because, because the deadline really is June thirtieth, we need to have something in place and operatable by July one. And so it would be my goal to bring this back to you next week. If the chamber is interested, their board is meeting next Monday and I would hope to have this on your agenda for next Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you for that, good work. Okay, that.
Chamber finally has parking, too.
Plenty, I think. That concludes the business. Oh, we have an add-on. Nancy Crusher has something to do with the jug handle. Nancy?
Okay, um, thank you and I apologize for just bringing this to you this evening, but it's probably a good opportunity and it's not a huge discussion, but I wanted to talk about the floodplain mitigation for the jug handle project. And as you may recall, we discussed using the land between I-205 and the railroad tracks for floodplain mitigation and trying to do some restoration project there for vegetation, I wouldn't quite call it a wetland restoration project, but the idea is to make it perform better as absorbing water and having good, like great landscaping there and having it be an amenity rather than an ugly eyesore the way it is today. So the question has come up, there's several different alternatives, probably my most, the most important question I have for you is if we, we need twenty thousand cubic yards of cut to balance our twenty thousand cubic yards of fill for the project. There are between the existing ground service and the bank full stage elevation, which is what you use in determining how much, what the, how far, how far deep can you actually cut to mitigate against flood and use the bank full stage? We can go, we can get a total of forty thousand cubic yards if we go all the way down to the bank full stage in that area. So is this making sense? So we.
I don't, I don't know what bank full means.
Well, think about when a, when a river floods, it goes over its banks.
Yeah.
So once the waters, you can't cut below the top of the bank, which would be, I think we're using the Clackamas River here. It would be, it would be false to think you could cut deeper than the bank full stage and get credit for a flood if you're doing balanced cut and fill. So for our project, we need twenty thousand cubic yards of cut and what we find if we go all the way down to bank, that only takes us halfway down to the bank full stage in the area we're looking at. And we could, the maximum we could get out of that area is forty thousand cubic yards.
That's going down to bank fill.
That's going down to bank full. Now, you wouldn't want to do it twice. You wouldn't want to go and take some out for our project, plant it and then go, oh shucks, you know, we left twenty thousand cubic yards there. So my question, but at the same token, if we did go all the way down to the forty thousand, the project won't pay for any excess floodplain mitigation. So the question I wanted to discuss is, does it seem to make sense to maximize the cut in that area and probably have a very, and these are not big numbers, by the way, I mean twenty thousand cubic yards isn't, I think the Cove is requiring like a hundred-and-sixty thousand cubic yards of balanced cut and fill. So these are small numbers, but you never know if a nearby site might need a little bit of banking, so to speak, for floodplain mitigation. So would we be interested in create, this would mean that if we did try to maximize the cut, we would end up with this twenty thousand cubic yards in a bank that we would hope we would sell, that those cubic yards to whomever wanted them or first come, first served. Those are details we'd have to figure out later. And it's not a lot of volume, but it just seems to me that we might want to maximize the use of that area rather than just take out half of what's available.
What is the risk? What's the downside risk?
Well, we, it would be the money. We'd have to come up with a way to pay for the extra excavation now, hoping that eventually as the area around there develops, there may be a need, there probably will be a need for some sort of floodplain mitigation and whether or not that would, we would ever get reimbursed through, through a banking system to repay whatever fund we decided to use to create the bank.
Doug?
We have two questions. Now, repeat to me where the area is. I think I got it right, but I want to make sure I've got it right.
It's the area between I-205 and Union Pacific Railroad tracks to the west of Metro.
The first thing, you say you can't go below bank, bank full.
To get credit.
Credit. And I guess I can't argue with what the credit is, but the fact is you would be moving soil that could be used for water capacity should there be a flood, if you went down below there.
No, not technically. They don't give you credit for that.
No, I know, I know what you're saying is they don't give you credit for it, but it still, it still provides a greater reservoir for water.
Possibly.
Yeah. I mean, there may still be water there in, in the soil, but still there's, there's, there's a displacement, but if that's what you get the credit for, that's what you get the credit for. I would like you to think about this piece a little bit because I've mentioned this on more than one occasion. You've got these huge box culverts that run over to, under 205 and also run under the railroad tracks. They stand much higher than I am tall. They could be used as a pedestrian bicycle transportation route. And if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do something like that, that's going to be an area that you're going to probably want to look at a little differently. But the Urban Renewal Agency also owns land on the other side of 205, a small portion of land on the other side of 205, I believe, and that's not going to be impacted by your Main Street development. And there may be the possibility of actually taking some, some soil from there. I'm not sure what I'm saying is correct, but the possibility may be there. But I would like to see if we could in fact maintain some kind of potential corridor for pedestrian walkway that would go through that area that we're talking about. Now, you say it's not wetland enhancement, I think it could be ultimately that because you may in fact be.
I just didn't want to mischaracterize it.
Yeah, I understand.
Without knowing exactly what I'm talking about.
But I think the possibility exists there, but I would like you to take a look at those box culverts and their location.
Those are ODATs, but you probably know that.
Well, yeah, I, I know that. I mean, they, they, well, I don't know, one of them may be Union Pacifics.
No, I believe they're ODATs because they go underneath the 205. Those could be Union Pacifics. We'd look into that.
Yeah, but they're, they're both.
I don't think we're talking about impacting the culverts at all. Those are part of our storm drainage system. So what we're, no, we're talking about the area to the north of there.
Well, my understanding, they were put in there to let cattle go from one side of the 205 to the other. So anyway, I mean, you don't, you don't make stormwater culverts that big.
Where would the cattle?
Where would they be?
Well, I don't know where they were used. This is something Dan, Dan, Dan Power told me.
They're also inundated during parts of the year.
No, I understand. So the cattle would use it.
And our humans.
No, nor would humans, but I think the potential, the potential still is during, during the dry season, they could be incorporated into your trail system, et cetera. So I, I think you have to think about.
And I agree with you, I think that's an interest, very neat idea.
Yeah, I think that's something we thought to think about.
But that's not, but that's not, that's a sidebar, isn't it?
Well, no, where she's talking about digging is in that area.
But it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be impacting the culverts.
You wouldn't be impacting culverts, but you would, you might be, you may be digging into the soil between 205 and the railroad tracks between those culverts.
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Okay.
But we would, we would prefer not to get near the culverts. Those we don't want to touch, we don't want to.
And I made the request before, when you're taking a look at this, I would like you to do monitoring of the current wetland that's between those two. There's a wetland there. I, I, I believe that there, I, I believe it's a, for all intensive purposes, it's a dead zone.
Right, we're looking at that. We, we're all, we, the project team is working on that, planting, taking out, putting back topsoil to a deep enough depth, perhaps even doing rows so we don't have to take out too much material and dispose of it. But to put, put topsoil in so that we would have a healthy, healthy vegetation and not just whatever's coming out of that wood waste that's killing plants.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we heard, we heard that at our, at the city commission update we gave about a month, a month ago, two months ago.
Yeah.
Well, I certainly don't have any trouble with you continuing to scope this out. If the downside is cost, then you know, you've got to find cost, you've got to find a, a source.
Find a finance director.
Yeah, financier and if, or, or a buyer or something, so it doesn't sound like it's a, that is something we shouldn't go ahead and continue to scope, from my view.
And we give credits outside of Oregon City. Can we give credits outside of Oregon City? For cut and fill, can we give credits to developers outside of Oregon City?
It has to be in the...
Well, it has to be in the floodplain. I know that, but the floodplain's huge. I mean, it offices all the way along the valley.
Well, I think what I understood was that it needed to stay in the local drainage basin, the Evernethy Creek drainage basin.
Any other questions, concerns, or issues on this one? Do you have enough guidance?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. See, Doug, you said you had something to add.
Well, yeah, it's just a request. When we have something that comes to us during the city manager's report that threw me, because I know what triggered it, it was a memorandum from a given individual dealing with looking at whether election candidates had a, do a background check on them and whose responsibility it was. I would have preferred that to come through a study session discussion prior, instead of a city manager's report in the commission meeting. Because, I mean, I saw a memo that I'm sure triggered one of our commissioners coming to you to talk about the issue. I got the same memo.
We all did.
We all did. And it's one of those things that we, I think, have to have some prior discussion about before it is tossed in the city manager's report at the commission level. The other thing, and it's something I probably should bring up at the commission meeting. A few years back, we implemented election sign codes that I believe only permitted for one issuer, one candidate, only one side, only one sign within a frontage. That's being violated now in Oregon City. And so I think this is, I think you need to look at that ordinance and have some science books.
Actually, I would prefer it the other way. I'd like to look at that ordinance and allow it for campaign season. I think the right of free speech and free expression deserves a robust campaign season. I reserve my right to have 25 signs in my yard.
Shoot, we have an ordinance in place.
No, no, I know. I'd like to look at changing the ordinance rather than...
Well, that's fine, but right now, we, no, I disagree with you.
Well, I know. I'm disagreeing with you.
Okay. That's fine. I believe our ordinances should be enforced, and we're not going to put a hold on it because of one person on the commission. If you can get five people, if you can get three people on the commission agreeing to that, that's fine. But we currently have an ordinance in place.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand that. I'd like to see, though, an exception made for that. I'm not saying tomorrow.
No, I'm saying the ordinance ought to be enforced.
I'm...
This one, this one, this one through the lawyers. This one through the lawyers, and we put some...
Soon as I get called on, I'm ready to say something.
Yeah.
And you're all right? Hit the button.
The city manager's report, I think I could talk eventually. I'm okay with not talking, but...
Doesn't get Nancy first, yes, since she had her flight on here. Back to you.
Tony, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I spoke with Laura Butler in planning a couple of days ago, and she, it was regarding the signs, and she indicated that what was read online, what's posted online, is, it's accurate to a point, but we had condensed the sign code because there's so much there, and we wanted to simplify it. And what actually is allowed is the one sign, which you described, and then another one that has a two-foot square, so that, so there's actually two signs, one the regular sign, then one just a little bit larger. And then also unlimited number of signs on the inside of windows and doors inside your home. Let's say you wanted to put some up on the, but that was also...
That's not what I'm talking about.
I know, but, but it, but it is, it is something that's allowed in our sign code.
Right, so we have an exemption for a single sign where the display surface area does not exceed two square feet. So that's kind of your political sign. But then you could also come in and get a sign in a residential zone. So technically, you could have two on your frontage, not that that addresses...
You have an excess of two.
Correct.
Can you just one of the two square?
Yes.
Okay, David?
Yeah, if you're scoring two candidates.
There's really two issues. One was the one about the sign, but I'd like to address the Commissioner Neely's concern about the first one. And you know, it's, you know, I'm new to Oregon City. I'm trying to learn the nuances of what commissioners prefer, and of course, we see here tonight that even among commissioners, preferences can be a little different among you, and I respect that. The concern that I have, though, is when I see an ordinance like that, that's pretty clearly instructs me, I actually agree with Commissioner Neely on the fact that there's an ordinance on the books under the charter, the manager's primary responsibility is to enforce it. This one had broad discretion in it about how to execute that enforcement, and I made a decision because I felt like the city had significant exposure, and I wanted to make sure that I erred on the side of being conservative in reacting to that. I think if I had it to do over, I would probably...
I think that's being liberal.
If I had it to do over, you know, 2020 hindsight, I'd probably, instead of handing out a memo, I would send an email a couple of days before. But I would, I would not want to presume that you really want a work session every time we enforce an ordinance that you already have on your books, because that is not workable.
I'm not suggesting a work session.
And I thought you said a work session on...
That's what you said.
Well, I didn't know whether to bring up the work session or the commission meeting, is what I said.
But I won't be coming back to you probably for enforcement of your regular ordinances, bringing those back every time I'm going to enforce them, because that would be just not workable. If there are some ordinances that you think are controversial, or they're problematic or troubling to any of you, and you can identify them, then we can start a whole series of work sessions on, on your code. But I'm assuming, and I think I have to assume somewhat, that the ordinances you have on the books you intend for me to enforce. And so I'm, I'm doing my best to enforce them, and if it's a new change in enforcement, I want to let you know, and maybe you prefer a different format, and I could certainly do that, or give you maybe a little more lead time before I issue a memo. That's fine, too. But, you know, we work through it, we do our best, and sometimes we guess wrong.
My only point was the ordinances being violated.
Well, not the, not the one on...
No, he's speaking about the other...
He's talking about the background checks.
I'm talking about the background check portion.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah. Now, the other portion, speaking of signs, I think my first meeting, there was a man in a pink shirt. I can't remember his name.
Yeah, it was Tom.
Ah, he came and had a pretty good, long, I won't say good, it was disturbing how many sign violations I saw in that. And, you know, I talked to the staff about it the next day, and learned that, you know, most of our code enforcement is almost always reactionary instead of proactive. And I know the commission, I've seen some of your historical minutes where you've grappled with this. I definitely will be bringing this to your attention at some future date when we can sit down in a, in a work session, probably during the next year's budget process, and say, do we want to have a more proactive enforcement program for code enforcement issues like this? And I would, I would strongly say, if we had the resources, any way we could possibly do it, we should do it. Because reacting to it often tends to be, it looks to the public like it's not consistent. And, and many times, it's not. It's whichever complaint rises on the list first, and I think my most frustrating part of reactionary enforcement came when I was a city manager in Missouri, and we had a couple of real dangerous railroad crossings in our community where people were killed about every five years. And I learned that the state of Missouri, MoDOT, they called it, would only, they had a remediation program to enhance safety on those, but you had to have something like six people killed every decade, and we were a couple short. So that was, see, that's an example of how come proactive stuff is so much better than reactive. I wish we could have addressed that, and how you tell a family that you can't do anything because there's, needs to be more victims. And it's terrible, but that was a situation the state was faced with. So, well, we don't have anything extreme like that here, but I would like to work on that program. And also, I'd like to say one more thing about my enforcement philosophy. If you see other ordinances that you think the city's not enforcing, please call me on the phone, and I will try to look into it, investigate it, and make sure that we're, we're doing our best to enforce it. And if we're not, we need to either get it off the books or come back for an amendment, because I think that's just credible. That's what we should be doing. One other thing, business licenses. I have learned that that's something we're not doing very much about on enforcement, is business licenses, and I'm going to be asking the finance director to look into that. We, I did encounter this same problem in two other cities where I worked, and there were a lot of revenues that could have been going to actually help develop the business and economic development programs, and chamber commerce, and everything that grows a healthy local economy can be funded in part, a small part, by some of those, some of those things. And so we're going to be taking another look at business license and seeing what we can do to tighten that up.
Good. You have comment? Are you finished with that?
No, please, go ahead.
Are you finished with those two?
I'm not filibustering, so, yeah, I've got a couple more things.
Okay, if I just talk about those two. We've talked about each of those, both of those, I think, every year, and they all come to, I mean, it's same kind of discussion, but it always comes down to money. And to be able to enforce those projects, we have to hire a person. We haven't been able to do that to date. And then secondly, to collect the business licenses. We had an intern who really did, I think, the only, how much business license are we not collecting kind of study, because we weren't able to do that.
Right.
So we have that data, if someone can share with you. And so we know those things, but we, again, when we have priorities, and that's not one of them...
That's right. I totally understand.
Yeah, no, so I applaud you putting that, but just to say that, you know, we're, I think we're aware that those things are there, that we just had to hire priorities to date.
Well, I expect you to hold me accountable on one thing, well, several things, but one of them I want you to remind me of if I forget, is that when I come back to you with a solution to one of these problems, if it's not within our existing resources, I will tell you in advance, and then I will propose alternatives where we can fund that. Because, you know, it may be that we don't, it's, it's not that it's not worth doing, it's just not high enough on the priority list for us to ask people to pay for it right now. And, and, but I won't be just saying we can, we can do this if I don't think we've got the resources either in our current capacity, or I haven't identified a way to pay for it. So that's going to be real critical, I think. If it's a sound recommendation, I should have a way to fund it.
Right.
And it'll be up to you folks to say, well, we think it's a priority, but man, we just don't want to pay, we just don't think people can pay for that right now, because there is a limit on what people can afford, and that's a judgment call that our elected officials have to make. So I also wanted to ask Nancy, and she may want to comment on this, but we had a sewage spill. She alerted me to this afternoon. Some vandals dumped some trash into a manhole near a pump station, so we had it discharged into one of the creeks. And we will, it'll probably be months before we know what the, what the penalty is, but there is always one for that kind of thing. And I think they made a police report, and we're looking into that. Also, today, our police chief was awarded the 2010 Oregon City Optimus Law Enforcement Award. I'm very proud of that, and I know he is, too, and I just want to thank you, Mike, for your service to the community. And then last but not least, I wanted to mention the, there was a survey done on the likelihood of passing a police bond for a new police facility, and the, and the results have been reported to the chief and I. But we wanted to have the consultant come back in a work session setting with you folks and really walk you through the details and the nuances of what he discovered, and then we know sort of what hurdles we need to get over in the future. So we have him scheduled to come in June, I believe it is, at a work session.